Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Monday, November 26, 2018. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Vera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Lauren Gregory of the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you once again just to ask for wisdom and mercy that we be of one heart and one mind as we handle the people's business. Lord, just bless and give us grace and mercy in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one presentation this evening, but I think it would be better served if we move that to the end of the program, considering we don't have a big agenda. So this time, I'm going to move the presentation to a little bit later in the meeting, and we will move to Citizens Communications to the Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone that would like to address the Council on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forth and state your name.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Spanney, Series Firefighters, Local 3636. Just wanted to go through a couple of things really quick. First off, I want to start off by thanking Ken for his service in the City Council and his time with the city. It's definitely been fun working with him over the last six years that I've been involved with our union. We haven't seen eye to eye on everything, but we've always been able to have a discussion and it's absolutely appreciated.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Continuing some of the stuff that we talked about last meeting that I was here, or two meetings ago, we held our fill-the-boot for the Muscular Dystrophy Association back on the 27th of October. We were a little bit shy of what our goal was, but we were able to collect $12,379 to go straight to the MDA. That is going towards some of their treatment, research, and medical needs for some of their patients, as well as assisting with their summer camp that they do every year that's specially designed for children with muscular dystrophy. We wrapped up our Pink October events, Breast Cancer Awareness. We don't have all the final numbers yet, but we're looking right around the $200 or $250 donation mark. We sold our pink t-shirts again this year. We're looking to continue that next year and into the future, and the same thing with our Lamo Dinner that we had, the Hot Pink Dinner at La Morita. For the holidays, we'll be collecting toys at our fire station, and what we do is we donate them to the Stanislaus County Foster Care Division. Anything that they don't have a need for, we plan on donating up to some of the people in Butte County to help with people that have lost items in the campfire. Tomorrow, I think you guys might have seen it, Resilience IPA is a beer that's going to be brewed by smaller breweries across the nation, and Blaker Brewery -- Brewery, sorry, will be having us out there and has opened up for the public at 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. We'll be there about 10:30 or so to support them, and if you haven't been invited already, we'd like to extend the invitation out to you guys. It'll be open up at 10:00, and I think they're going to stay open until about 8:00 o'clock at night, is what the plan is. And then anything that they sell, once that beer is ready to go out for distribution or for sale, all the proceeds are going to go towards Butte County fire victims from the campfire. And the last thing, you see this rather unimpressive mustache on my face? It's not my everyday look, but for the month of October, for the month of November, we're doing what's called Movember. We're raising funds for men's health awareness, things like suicide, different cancers, and we have a GoFundMe set up that we're sharing on our local Facebook page, and all that money's going to be split between two of our causes. We haven't identified one of the causes yet, but it's going to be a men's health cause, and the other is going to be a former firefighter here from Series whose family is experiencing some medical issues, so we'll be donating half of them as well. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
G. Akeley, Series. I see on the agenda you have a Resolution 2018-132, the 2018 pavement preservation project. I realize that's coming up for vote to close out, and that's a good thing. I'd like to know when the next phase is going into effect, because we've been in my neighborhood from Service to Whitmore on Blaker Road. That thing was paved brilliantly a long time ago. Well, I can't say a long time ago, in the last 10 years, and they turned around within months and tore it all up, and there's been potholes and dips in there, and it's just not a nice street anymore, and it's a major artery in some sorts to Whitmore to Service Road. It needs to be fixed as soon as possible. It'd be nice to know when the next phase of the resourcing project's going to go on.
You're specifically asking about Blaker between Service or?
Empathetic, but some of those other streets over there.
Well, Blaker specifically is its own project. It's actually a federally funded project. It is actually under design right now, though it'll be under construction next summer for Blaker Road. That's an overlay project.
What do you mean by federally?
Federally funded, meaning we get federal gas tax monies that we utilize.
No state money, huh?
It comes through the state, but it is a federal tax debt, federal tax money that comes back to us, gas tax.
No timeframe on when?
Next summer.
Just next summer. Okay. Maybe we can repair all of our cars by then. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, we will move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions, so I'll move to Conflict of Interest Declaration. Is there anyone on the Council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 11 consent calendar items? I would like to declare a conflict of interest on item number nine. As I stated in the first hearing, my firm has done work with the applicant in the last 12 months, so I will recuse myself from that item. Anyone else? Okay. With that, I'll look for direction. Wow, excuse me, is there anyone on the Council that would like an item pulled from the consent calendar other than item nine?
Ten as well, and number nine.
Ten, 11, you said?
No, nine.
Just 10 and 9?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than nine and 10? Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Council for direction.
Move for approval of 1 through 8 and 11.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll turn over the diocese to Vice Mayor Klein for item number nine. Tom, do I need to leave the room, or can I just slide back? Okay. Okay, I'll open up. Item number nine, consideration and final adoption of Ordinance Number 2018-150. Is there anybody on the Council that has any questions or concerns?
Well, I pulled it because I can't vote for it as a consent item, and I have the same concerns as I did at our last meeting, which is the increased traffic on Whitmore west of the project, the lot sizes, as well as the park maintenance.
Okay. Is there anybody else on the Council? Anybody in the public got a question on item number nine? I'll bring it back to the Council for action.
Move for approval, item nine.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
No.
Mayor Vera has sustained due to a conflict.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the Mayor for item number 10. Okay. Item number 10, Resolution Number 2018-131, accepting the 2018 pavement preservation project as complete. Approve the balancing contract change order authorizing the filing of the notice of completion and retention release to the contractor. Councilmember Rhino.
Mr. Wells, is, once we accept the project as complete, would that mean that all of those little temporary markers that they had up before they painted the pavement should be taken out by the contractor?
Well, generally speaking, yeah, but there are generally some punch item, punch list items that may be minor in nature. If there are some of those, then they're still on the hook for those, and we can generally get those removed. If there's a specific location that we've missed, just let us know. We'll make sure we get those taken out.
Just right down here on, I think it was Fourth and Magnolia?
Yeah, we'll take a look and make sure we get those. The contract's on the hook for that.
As long as our staff doesn't have to go out and pick them up.
Any other questions?
No.
Nope. Okay. This time, is there anyone in the audience that had any questions on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Council for direction.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2018-131.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, moving on, we have no unfinished business, no public hearings, no new business, no discussion items, so I'll move to Councilmember referrals. Is there anyone on the Council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports. I only have one thing to report. I believe this coming weekend, on Saturday, we have the opening of the Christmas Tree Lane, so I did want to make, I'm probably stealing somebody's thunder out here, but I did want to acknowledge that, so this time, Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember DeRocset?
Nothing.
Okay, then we will move to, Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items to report on. As I sent to the Council today, the Fire Apparatus Committee, based on Council's actions at the last meeting, approval of the purchase of four new fire apparatus. Three members of our department left today for a tour in pre-construction build process, where they make the final selections on the build of the new apparatus, so that's an exciting time for the department, so we're looking forward to that. The, a couple of other items of note for the calendar this week, Centennial Committee Meeting is tomorrow evening here in the community center at 5:00. The Chamber is having an event coming up on Thursday, and still sign up for that. It's on the Council's calendar for the Holiday Wine Tasting Event. And as Mayor mentioned, the Annual Christmas Parade and Festivities start on Saturday at Smyrna Park, 5:30, starting the festivities and then the parades at 7:45. And then lastly, just a reminder about the swearing-in for our new Council meetings, a special meeting on December 6th.
Confirmation? Confirmation on the parade time is what?
7:45 is the time. Symbol to get ready at 7:30.
Okay. Tom?
Nothing.
Rick?
Thanks, G.
Rick? Okay. Jeremy, I think I saw you there. Supervisor DiMartini? Okay. We will not have closed session this evening. That has been canceled, so we will now move to the presentation, which we have one presentation, recognition of Councilmember Lane for his tenure on the Council. I do have a couple of things that I did want to read here. The first one is a proclamation, a proclamation honoring Ken Lane, Councilmember, for his splendid contributions and dedication to the people of the City of Series. Whereas Ken Lane's public service to the City of Series began by his appointment to the Planning Commission in 1998, he served admirably on the Planning Commission from January 1998 to November 2005. He was elected to the City Council in November 2005, re-elected in 2009, and again re-elected for a third term in 2013. And whereas Councilmember Lane has worked tirelessly on behalf of the residents, business, community, and young people of Series by attending numerous community events, including ribbon cuttings and meetings with local businesses and city staff. And whereas Councilmember Lane's calm demeanor and thoughtful questions have helped drive discussions and consciousness on numerous agenda items before the Council. And whereas Councilmember Lane served as a member of the League of California Cities' Board of Directors from 2012 to 2018, the California League of Cities Transportation Policy Committee from 2008 to 2009, and the California League of Cities Public Safety Policy Committee from 2009 to 2010. He was also the League's Central Division President from 2011 and 2012. And whereas Councilmember Lane also served on multiple city committees and outside bodies during his time as a Councilmember, including the Christmas Festival Committee, City Schools Committee, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Stanislaus Elder Abuse Prevention Alliance, Whitmore House Preservation Committee, and other city committees. He also served on the regional committees such as the East Stanislaus Integrated Regional Water Management Program, Surface Water JPA, the Successor Agency for the former Series, excuse me, former Stanislaus Series Redevelopment Commission, and the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability. And whereas Councilmember Lane, among his many public appearances and presentations, served along with his wife, Yvette, as Mr. and Mrs. Claus at the City of Series Christmas Festival and served as President of the Lions Club. And whereas Councilmember Lane will retire from the City Council on December 6, 2018, leaving behind a legacy of good work and accomplishments that have improved the quality of life for the countless Series residents. Now therefore, the City of Series does hereby commend and thank Councilmember Ken Lane in his distinguished service to the community, his selflessness and tireless effort on behalf of the residents and the community during his tenure as Councilmember of the City of Series proclaimed this 26th day of November 2018. And it's signed by myself, Vice Mayor Klein, Councilmember DeRocset, and Councilmember Rhino. As a token of our appreciation, I wanted to present to you on behalf of the Council and the City with a centennial brick. The gift of the centennial brick is hereby presented to Ken Lane from his City Council members. Thank you for 20 years of service as a City Council member.
Thank you.
Before I open it up to many of you that I'm sure would like to say some kind words, I get the first swipe at this, so I'm going to take a few minutes, and we were kind of reminiscing a few minutes ago back in the Mayor's office about the years that we've served together and the things that we've seen, some great times, some challenging times, and definitely some interesting times, from our days back in what we called the old Green Room in the other building, through the different city managers we had, and the many people that we served with over the years. We've served with many great people that have gone and passed on, like Councilmember Phipps and Councilmember Ochoa. We had some tragic events with Howard Stevenson, and, but we've had plenty of many, many accomplishments that I am proud to say that I served with Councilmember Lane on, and that stems from the new Whitmore Interchange, the Riverbough Regional Park, the many infrastructure projects that are serving the City of Series as well as the downtown redevelopment that we now have in place, and that I'm hopeful that many years from now, you know, we can look back and thank Ken for all of that. There's a lot of time, effort, and dedication that this man put into the city, and I just want to personally thank him, not only as a Councilmember, a colleague, but a very dear friend of mine, and I'm going to miss his calm demeanor at times and his, you know, ability to decide what he felt was in the best interest of the city, and for that, I'm going to miss him. I've got two more years myself, and I'm going to, I've invited him back anytime he'd like to come and speak, so thank you, Ken. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So this time, is there anyone on the Council that would like to say anything before I open it up?
Yeah, well, just real quick, you know, I've been on the Council since 2008, and it was like one of those times, I remember back near the Green Room. I had the pleasure to coach his boys in football at the high school, and I've known Ken for a long time. He brought me into Lions Club, and, you know, I've experienced a lot of great things because I had met a great friend. And, you know, the time that I spent with him is, I still get more of Ken because I'm in the Lions Club and the Old Fisherman's Club. We forgot that on the plaque because he's on the board with the Old Fisherman's Club. But the funny part is, he's going to find stuff to do, because that's what he does. He's a doer. And he's been great for this community, and he's going to be missed. These great things with the League of Cities, I know you're here to talk about that and all the things that he did with that, but it's just been an honor, and I've learned from you for the last 11 years. I've learned from you, so I appreciate it. All right?
You know, Ken, what I'd like to say is, since I've been on the City Council and I bought, I beat an incumbent for this seat, you have welcomed me on the Council. We've had a few disagreements, and yet we have left it here at the diocese. We have not taken it and outside of this room and had, you know, arguments or anything like that. You've got to be commended and respected for allowing everybody to have their opinion, just like you have an opinion. And, you know, like Councilmember DeRocset, I mean, I'm also on the Lions Club, and, you know, it's my turn to be the President of the Lions Club, and you can see by my presidency, you know, the changes that I'm trying to implement and how certain things have changed, and we've had a few discussions about it, and, you know, I respect your leadership and I respect some of the insights that you've had, and yet you've let other individuals grow, and you're there to assist when it's needed, so I thank you for your contributions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I don't know if Ken remembers how we met, but.
I sure do.
Planning Commission, I was the Staff Secretary, and it was a whole lot different than sitting up here with him because he was kind of my boss back then, but, well, I let him think he was, but he really wasn't.
I never was.
And over the years, I really appreciated the amount of time that he took, even on the Planning Commission, considering everything that was brought before him. He didn't just maybe go along with everyone. He gave it a lot of thought. And then when I joined him up here, we certainly haven't agreed on, probably not a whole heck of a lot, but I still really appreciate all the time that you've invested, because I don't think most people realize the amount of time it takes to serve on the City Council and to serve your community, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda.
I'll take the chance. I think I got it.
You have a ways before your guys.
You've got some more time. This is your last meeting. We're going to hold you here as long as we can. So echoing the sentiments, what you've brought to this community in terms of leadership and activity and making us a better place to live, and that is something that is truly commendable, your participation at the state level in the league, seeing your interactions and how you represent the city at the state level. You help put us on the map that we know that we're a city on the rise and moving, and you're a big, big part of that at the state level, and I truly appreciate that. We haven't always seen eye to eye, but I truly value your professionalism, your ability to stay in the moment, at the same time, leave that at the diocese when it needs to. And that friendship that I feel we've built, I look forward to continuing, and you know my phone number. Call me anytime, Ken. I look forward to it.
Pleasant to go.
You bet.
Okay. Okay. Tom?
Councilman Lane, I've had the pleasure of working for this city for almost 18 years, and you've been a big part of that, so from the Planning Commission to the City Council, I think as a staff person, what I represent about any elected body, and certainly the Planning Commission, is kind of knowing where your planning commissioners stand, and so you have a good sense as projects move forward, and always have the sense of, I know where you stand, and I appreciate that greatly. It did make my job easier, working with project proponents and kind of knowing how the Planning Commission and the City Council may act is always of a value to staff, and so I've appreciated that greatly, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please come forth to the podium.
I get to do this in two parts this evening. I have the distinct privilege of representing the California State Assembly tonight with a resolution on behalf of Assemblymember Ken Lane, signed by Assemblymember Adam Gray, who unfortunately is too ill to be here tonight, and Senator Anthony Canola. I'm not going to read the resolution, because we've all been here and lived a good deal of what's in here, but what can be said is that Ken is a friend of this community, he's a friend of the legislature, he's a friend of California. He is always putting the interests of this community first, and when I say legislator in California is because he advocates for Series each and every time he interacts with people in and outside of the community. So Ken, on behalf of the California State Legislature, I'd like to present you with this resolution honoring your time and service in this community. It's certainly been memorable. Let me share this with you first, and I'll make my own comments. And although it's my privilege to represent the California State Legislature tonight with this recognition, it's really more fun for me to recognize Ken as my friend, myself as a former Vice Mayor of this community, and I think in probably many of your other comments, there is nobody here that's actually always agreed with Ken, and that's a fair statement for each and every one of us. There's nobody in this room that's always agreed with Ken, or he's always agreed with us on any, every topic. And what I say about that is that Ken can actually take those moments of disagreement and still remain your friend and remain committed to the project. There is nobody in this town, sorry, Eric, there is nobody in this town who will come to your aid and rescue faster than Ken Lane. I can speak that for my family members, I can speak it for our community, I can speak for the nice 100-year-old house around the corner. This guy is always there, whether it's with his chainsaw, which he really likes to cut down shrubs with, whether it's with the barbecue grill. Well, he was using it, but he has, he comes with ideas, he comes with manpower, and he comes with devotion. And every time I've said, hey, I've got an idea, he's, okay, let's talk about it. And he may find me at the most unusual locations, it could be a four-way stop in town, football game, doesn't really matter. He is devoted to this community and has never stopped. So whether we've disagreed on topics, the commitment Ken Lane has to this community is never, ever wavered, and that goes from his whole family. The Lane family's been entirely devoted. He has an example of his wonderful mother here, his ever-suffering wife, who puts up with all the things that Ken gets involved with, from Christmas Tree Lane to every project, more than this resolution could ever recognize. Ken, you set an example for this town, and your example is you lead with your heart, and we appreciate you so much in this community, and I appreciate you personally, my family does, and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Ken, we've known each other for quite a while, and I see from your years of service here, this makes your 20th year as serving this community, and you think of all the things that have happened in the last 20 years, the building projects, this is a whole new city hall, a new fire station, you've revitalized the downtown, and there's a lot of the things that's happened here in the last 20 years and all you've been a part of. So, and you just think in 20 years of the Planning Commission.
And so, and you just think, uh, in 20 years with the planning commission and city council, uh, the stack of papers that, uh, the staff, uh, agendas, uh, they'd probably go 10 stories high if you put them all together there. And all that, that reading, all the meetings. Uh, but you've been a great part of this community and we appreciate, uh, what you've done. You've made Ceres, you know, a better place to live. Plus you've been a good friend. So the, I have a resolution from the, uh, the Board of Supervisors. It's not as pretty as the one from the state of California, but we don't have that much money. But this is, uh, very heartfelt and, uh, the, the Board of Supervisors does appreciate, uh, what you've done for the community and the time that you've spent. And, uh, you know, we, um, as you move on to something else in your life, as I, I think, uh, Councilman De Rosset said, you're, you'll find something to do. And I'm sure you will. So it's been great, uh, working with you and we'll still remain friends through the years there as you go on to the next phase of your life.
Thank you, Jeff.
So thank you for everything you've done. And I'll just present this to you.
Well, I'd like to say they save the best for last, but I don't know if that's true or not. A lot of you don't know who I am. My name is Stephen Falls. I'm with the League of California Cities. I have a, you see the interesting title. I'm the Central Valley Division Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities. So, um, I started this job in 2008 and I've had the pleasure of working with Ken since then. But we've done much more than work together, Ken. We've become dear, dear friends. And I just wanna tell you, it's not gonna be the same without you, buddy. We have our first conference coming up this week and you're not gonna be there. And it's gonna be terrible without you. I'll send you a couple of shots of us having drinks for you, okay? I promise you. Ken was not only, this, as was said before by the great mayor, not only the vice mayor, I mean, vice president of our division and the president of our division, but he was the state director. And what the state director does is he sits on the board of directors. And Ken was the voice for the Central Valley for us, okay? He was there to push for our causes, make sure that we were heard up there. And that's very, very important. And Jeremy Young is gonna be following in your footsteps. I hope that you'll work alongside him because he's gonna need it. You had amazing input. You know, everybody loved you. You never had any problem, you know, getting appointed to things. And you sat on our policy committees and stuff like that. And you just did a great job. It was also amazing, I don't think anybody that I've ever worked with, I've worked with every city council member and city manager that we have down in the state, ever had the connections that Ken did. And we'd go up there to, uh, to Sacramento, legislative action day. I remember one day sitting in, uh, Bill Berryhill's office and then sitting out in the courtyards. You guys were smoking cigars and drinking Crown Royal and then, yeah, Tom Berryhill and Anthony Canola would come over. And it was just like, you know, good times, buddy, good times. You made my job a lot easier. And you also kept us connected with the, with the council. And I, and I, uh, would like to ask all of you to please step up and, and help us with, uh, make sure that Ceres' voice is heard too. Please be, stay engaged with the league and, you know, go to the conferences and things like that. So, um, I have a pretty little plaque for ya. I won't read it either. Actually, I'm gonna, I am gonna read it. Doggone it. So League of California Cities presented to Ken Lane, City Councilmember, City of Ceres. On behalf of the League of California Cities and the Central Valley Division, we'd like to thank you for your leadership and service to the Central Valley Division. And then we just have the different titles, everything covered.
Is there anyone else?
Who said that?
Good evening, Eric Ingersen. I've known Ken since 19, when were you born?
Sixty.
Yeah, since 1964, I think. When he used to stand in front of his house, what?
Red lights on.
Would you stop? He used to stand out in front of his house and try to charge a toll on the sidewalk for walking in front of his home. Isn't that true?
That would be.
Yes. And he had a hard time saying grandma. I remember that distinctly. He would always say gorma. And I would say, Ken, say grand. He'd go, grand. And I'd say ma, ma, say grandma, gorma. Had a hard time doing that, didn't you?
I did.
That's how long I've known Ken Lane. Uh, he grew up essentially across the street from me on Thomas Avenue. We have great memories dating clear back to then. And then we got involved in politics. Holy cow. Somebody should've warned us about that. Ken, you've done a great job and I'm proud to know you, proud to be your friend. And really, over the last 20 years, you've, you've really been outstanding for the city of Ceres. Um, the quiet demeanor part maybe doesn't apply all the time, but I'm sure that it does when I'm not around. So, Ken, congratulations. And you know, believe it or not, around, oh, I'm gonna say maybe 2022, you're probably gonna think of coming back.
No.
I won't believe it, but you will. Thanks again, Ken. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, Ken, you've come to the end of the road here, buddy. Been a long, wonderful experience. And, uh, our city is so fortunate to have had your leadership, uh, for so many years. And nobody, nobody bleeds Ceres' blood like Ken Lane. And I, I know all of you know that. And that's why when you have disagreements, you know, you come out and you're still a team. And that's important. And, uh, Ken's leadership is something for everyone to emulate on this council going forward. Uh, very important for you guys to all stay engaged in Sacramento and make sure that the Valley's voice is heard and Ceres' voice is, is heard. And Ken has done that so effectively. And, uh, I gotta say, it was, uh, well, I wanted to spell the myth of, uh, I wanted to fake news on the, uh, cocktails. That never could've happened in my office. But, uh, Ken, it's been a pleasure to have you as a council member in this community. And I just wanna thank you for your, your 20 years of service. And, uh, look forward to, uh, having a little extra time on your hands. There's life after politics, bud. Thank you very much. Okay.
Oh, my name's Lee Brant. And Ken, you know how I feel. I said it last time that thank you for all your service. Uh, but I do wanna bring up a couple of names that haven't been mentioned. One is Leonard Shepherd. I'm sure he would be proud of your front yard and your side yard. And he can't be here tonight. And then I'm sure that Elvis is incredibly proud of his son. Thank you for your service.
Is there anyone else? Okay, well, I deliberately held off to allow Councilmember Lane to get the last word in because I know he would like to have that. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn over the mic to, uh, Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor, for the last time. What a, what a great council we have, you guys here in Ceres, and what a great staff we have. And I just wanna thank each and every one of you, my colleagues that sit up here, that work hard every day to make this city better. Thank you. And that's been more than an honor to serve with you guys. I gotta tell you that. And I wish you all the best. The city of Ceres has meant a lot to me and it's, some of it's been said. And, you know, not a whole lot needs to be said from my perspective, other than how I, how I have served this community. And I said a year ago, and always said during my tenure of, of being on the council and being an elected official, that, that I would know when it was time to step down. A year ago, I knew it was time. And I, I made that, I think, a point. It's clear. I think Jeff even wrote on it over a year ago. Um, good to see you, by the way, too, Jeff. I was hoping you'd give me that cartoon. Okay. Anyway, I knew then that if I stayed another term or went to go for another term, whether I stayed or not, I'd be self-serving. Um, I knew my time was done. I knew that, I knew it when it came to a meeting time, knowing that I had to show up for another meeting. My heart wasn't open to, to serve in this community like it always was. So that's when I knew. So you have to kinda self-check yourself in this business of politics. And, you know, and I always said that if I ever thought I was gonna be self-serving, it was time to step down. That's when I knew, a year ago. So this last year's been kind of a interesting year. We've, we've accomplished a lot of things. Um, we've obviously brought some money in. We bought fire trucks. I think we pretty well negotiated with every union group, which I'm proud of to say that at least I'm leaving, um, the city, I believe, better than what it was when I came. I know there's still one group that, that we're working with and I wish the council the best of luck and, and the union that you have to negotiate still with the best of luck. So, and I know that you guys will get through that together. But, you know, we have a great city. The citizens of this city are just amazing. Um, I've had the opportunity to be in front of so many of our citizens, um, over the years. And I gotta say that it's just been an honor and a privilege to serve, to serve this community from, from every aspect that I could possibly give. I hope I've done that. I've hoped I made our community proud. I do wanna thank some people tonight, especially my wife. This work gets hard, sorry. I said I was gonna do this without any tears, but it's hard. Honey, thank you for being with me every step of the way. I appreciate you very, very much. And my mother, you know, she's, she's still in this game of politics, um, for the school board. And, you know, she says, Ken, are you sure you don't wanna run again? I said, Mom, no, I don't wanna run again. I'm, I'm through. Um, but Mom, I wish you the best too and your endeavors as you've moved forward in, in the school board. I know you're doing a fabulous job over there too. But Mom, more than that, thank you for seeing me through all this. And it goes without saying, I got some dear friends here tonight. Not, not stating, I'm not meaning to leave anybody out. Oh, thank you, brother. I'd seen you walk in. Thanks for being there for me too, bro. My brother's standing in the back there. But there's, there's two people that I just wanna just chat about real quick. And one of them is Eric Ingersen. The other one is Bill Berryhill. Um, we all kinda got together one night way back. I think it was back in Rob Phipps' backyard, I think. Wasn't that kinda back? Yeah. And, and Bill was on the school board at that time. Eric was on the council at the time. And, and I think I was, I was on the planning commission at the time. And they said, Ken, why don't you run? Well, I ran one time. It wasn't very good. And then I came back to run again and, and, you know, I told Bill, he goes, are you crazy? I go, no. I said, everything's out there now. I've got none in my closet, all right? For crying out loud. Let's see what happens, right? So Eric and Bill stuck with me all the way. And when I told them both, we were sitting at the island having a glass of wine, I said, you know, I'm not running no more. I'm done. And they didn't believe it. They thought I would run again. And finally, I said, no, I'm really done. And so I'm the last one, I guess. Um, we called ourselves the Three Amigos at one time and, or even at times the Ceres Mafia, which that was our own inside thing. But anyway, I just, I just, I just really wanna thank you and Eric and Bill for what you guys have done. Bill, you showed me the ropes in Sacramento when you got up there too. I mean, you know what? That helped build a lot of friendships. You, you let me tag along with you, so I thank you for that. And the city of Ceres should thank you too because it was because of you, truly, um, things really got started as far as with the league for me. And, and I think Stephen can say the same thing. We, we really, you really, you really, we really admired what you did for us in opening your office, which opened up doors to so many more offices in Sacramento. So because of you, I think a lot of that happened. So thank you for that. The patio was a true story. You know, it was either, it was either, um, Crown Royal or a good glass of red wine, right? And depending on when it was, if it was summer, sometimes it would be a glass of white wine chilled. But it, he did have a heck of a patio when he served up there in the assembly. But, but, and Eric, you're, you know, Eric said to me, he says, okay, Ken, you're done now. Go serve on the school board. I go, you're crazy. That ain't happening. Well, I did. I go, I'm not following you there, Eric. It's not happening. Anyway, but again, I just wanna recognize two of my best friends in the world that, that have been there. And Stephen, you too, um, you've been there every step of the way too. And just to have you guys here tonight, you know, officially and unofficially, um, I just thank you. But there's one other person I gotta mention in this room tonight is Lisa. Lisa was there for every campaign of mine. And I'm telling you what, there was, there was times that we thought, you know what? And I say, what? And she's just, don't ask. I did what she did and what told me to do pretty much. And you know what? Thank you. You really stood for, for everything that Ceres stands for and what I stand for. And you know what? I couldn't ask for a better friend than you, Lisa. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Staff, going to staff, I just wanna say thank you, each and every one of you, all department heads. You know what? We, Tom, you finally got your general plan done. I know you were excited to get that done and we finally got through that. I know there's some, still some work to do on the ordinances and that sort of thing, cleanup. But you know what? We were able to get that done. So I thank you for, um, the charge that you put on that and, you know, got us through all that. So thank you for that. And I'm glad you were able to get it on my tenure too. I appreciate that a lot. Chief, thanks, buddy. I know you took over a department, um, that had some challenges ahead. And you've really done an outstanding job. And I just appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you. Officer Collins, you're quite a guy. Thanks for the recreation time you put into. I don't mean that in pond, but you too, Tom. But anyway, um, who else is in here? Jim D. Martini, you're an excellent supervisor. The hardest working supervisor this county has ever seen. I know that for a fact. You are places to where I don't think, how have you get there? I mean, you leave meeting after meeting and you know what? You have done an outstanding job for this community and thank you. Um, I, I would hope that, that whoever follows in your footsteps can, can do that well because I don't think anybody can, uh, do what, what you do. But you know what? I, it would be a heck of a challenge for them to do that. So thank you for your service. The fire guys are in the room. Thank you, guys. Um, I just, you know, admire your service that you give to this community and, and, you know, every day. And, you know, you put your lives out there, the same as everybody else that serves in this community, whether it's police or fire. I thank you guys for that. Appreciate it and wish you guys the best, the best of everything. Jeremy, you've done a heck of a job over the years. I mean, our, our water and sewer is, is, is in places where it wasn't when, when it started, that's for sure. And, and you've had a lot to do with that. So thank you. Thank you very much. I'm trying to look around the room here. Oh, our city clerk, how, how great that was to, you came on and have been just tremendous. Toby, you've done a heck of a job bringing her on. I gotta thank you for that. I'll thank you last though. Pardon me? And then I see my old city clerk in the back, Cindy. You're so precious and thank you for being here. You know, Cindy had neck surgery like me and, and I called her because I had some issues with pain and different things. And I didn't know how to handle it. And Cindy came over and brought soup, I think, and, and some different medicine that helped me that I was able to get through the time coming home from the hospital until I got back to the doctor. So, um, you've been quite, you, you've meant so much to me over the years. I mean, it's, you've been there every step of the way too. And to see you here tonight just means so much to me, Cindy. Thank you for being here. Hi, Ann. Won't forget you either. Thanks for being here. You got the planning commission, right? Doing awesome. There you go. Thank you for being here. Okay, well, I think I've covered all staff. Have I? Ooh. No, I want, Jeff, thank you, by the way. Thanks for covering. And honestly, you know what? We haven't always seen eye to eye, but you know what? You've been fair. And I certainly appreciate you. And what you'd say and do for this community cannot be said, what you've done, other than what you write. And you've wrote some tremendous articles that have really put us in front too of other cities. And we thank you for that. Last but not least, Toby Wells. You know, he says we didn't always just agree. And he's right, we didn't. And I always didn't have a calm demeanor like everybody said in here, right? I tried out here in public, but sometimes we didn't have calm demeanors in other places. But I gotta tell you what, this has became a dear, dear friend. Um, I thank you for, I, you know, when you came into this, we weren't, there was a couple of us, I'll be honest. I can say it now, wasn't supportive. But you know what? In the end, where you're at today, I'll tell you what, we've got an asset in Toby Wells for this community. I hope that you will serve as long as you possibly can, as long as this council will allow you to serve. I hope you do that because, um...
I hope you do that, because you are an asset. And you know what, I'm very proud to call you my city manager, so thank you for your friendship too. Okay, with that, I think it's, I'm gonna wrap it up and say God bless you all, and you know what, we'll see you on the other side.
Grab that name tag and run for the floor.
Okay. With that, we will go ahead, and the first order of business, we will adjourn to our next special city council meeting, which will be the swearing-in of the new council member on Thursday, December 6th at 5:30 PM here in the chambers. And then, now, we will move to the reception. For those of you that would like to stay, we're gonna open up the, the back panels and have the reception for Councilmember Lane with some refreshments. So, again, thank you all for coming, and make sure you have a safe drive home. Thank you.